All right. Hello, Commission. Here we are together in 2023 for our first meeting. And this is the meeting when we have our budget hearing, so that's occurring tonight. The first thing I would like to do is call this meeting to order. It's the City of Kalamazoo Business Meeting for Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023. And our first order of business is calling out the roll. Clerk Borland.
Commissioner Decker.
Present.
Commissioner Hess.
Present.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Present.
Commissioner Juarez. Commissioner Pradel.
Present.
Vice Mayor Cooney.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Commissioners may have a motion to excuse Commissioner Juarez.
So moved.
Made by Vice Mayor Cooney.
Second.
Supported by Commissioner Hoffman. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay? Right. Commissioner Juarez is excused. For our opening... For... Did I miss him? Okay. Just in time. For our opening ceremony this evening, we are honored to have Pastor Christopher Inglesman here with us from the Covenant United Reformed Church. Welcome. Thank you for being here. So what I'm going to ask is that we could stand for the invocation and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Almighty and mercyful God, King of kings and Lord of lords, we draw near to you in the evening of this day to call upon your name, Lord, for help and for wisdom. Lord, in your word, you have said that if any man lacks wisdom, let him ask of God, who giveth liberally. And, Lord, we confess this evening that we do lack wisdom, and we look and seek for the wisdom that comes down from on high. Lord, I pray that you would bless the commissioners here, the mayor, and the... all those who have the responsibility of administering the city. Lord, that you would give them all that they need to do their work, to recognize, oh, Lord, that the power that they wield is given from you, and they are answerable to you for how they use it. And so we pray, oh, God, that they would do it with joy. We praise, oh, Lord, that the sacrifice of the time that they make would be blessed and owned by you for the good of this city. Lord, remember the citizens of Kalamazoo. We pray, Lord, for those who are hurting, oh, Lord, this evening, for the downtrodden and the poor. Lord, their cries also reach up to you. And we pray that you would minister to them, Lord, out of your fullness and provide for them all that they need bodily and spiritually and emotionally and physically. Lord, we pray for all other causes, Lord, in this city that await your blessing. Lord, everything awaits your divine blessing. We pray, Lord, that you would bless us then this evening and guide and lead and protect, and may all things be done to your honor and glory. We ask all these things in the forgiveness of our many sins. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good to see everybody here. I'm starting out 2023 with a bit of a cold, so I might not... it's just a cold. I am well tested, so as far as that goes, I understand there might be a little... another piece of illness here that's occurring up in the dais, so I'm sorry. Trying to give you a parting gift here, I guess, Attorney Robinson. But now is the time on our agenda for adoption of the formal agenda. So commissioners, is there any item that's on the consent agenda you would like to have moved? Administration?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm requesting that item F3 be pulled from the agenda or removed from the agenda as we need to have more discussions with Kalamazoo Public Schools' new administration.
Okay. Thank you so much. So F3 will be pulled from the consent agenda? All right. I'm sorry. G3. Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to pull an item that's on the G? Thank you. Commissioner, for that reminder, the consent agenda, move it to the regular agenda. Okay. See no one. Communications, Manager Rissma. Nothing, Your Honor? All right. Thank you. So now is the opportunity for public comments. Those are general public comments. Speakers will each have three minutes for their comments. We'll start with people who are here in the chambers. Please come to the podium, state your name and whether you live in the city. Also, if... this is an opportunity for call-in comments as well. So I want to remind people that the phone number to call is 888-382-9556, and you can start calling in now if you would like. So if there's anyone in the audience who wants to address the City Commission, please come to the podium, state your name. Once again, whether you live in the city. Let's... we're all waiting for you there.
Waste of time just saying, doing that Alphonsk Gaston Act. Okay. I'm Jack Urban. I live at 2300 Porridge Street in Kalamazoo. I'd like to comment on the arrangements made for the departure of our former Chief of Police. I think we can all agree that the matter was most unfortunate from a variety of perspectives. I'd like to address one of them, and that is a lost opportunity to hold a truth and reconciliation forum so that healing of the relationships that were involved could occur in public, and so the community as a whole could benefit from the learnings that would take place in such a venue. I believe that would strengthen the whole community and would help raise the standards for public behavior and individual behavior in general. Because Truth and Reconciliation Committee Commission basically acknowledges the basic humanity of everybody involved. That's key. And I don't sense a lot of that going on in the process that took place. It was turning the crank. We're going to turn the administrative crank, and we're going to come out with an answer that doesn't satisfy anybody totally, but doesn't offend anybody totally. It's just had to happen that way. Well, I'm suggesting the next time, we prepare ourselves for doing something more creative, more courageous, and more beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, guys. My name is Tiana Ward. I live on West Michigan Avenue in Kalamazoo. We're debating. I'm not sure if this is where I'm supposed to make the comment, so I'm just going to go ahead. I serve as Western Student Body Vice President, and we're just here to show our support for the proposed budget coming in regards to the potential restructure of West Michigan Avenue. As you all know, we recently lost a student, Kaylee, in August, and we have seen so much motivation from our student body addressing off-campus safety and how we can improve the areas that students are walking on all the time. So my role here is just to stand in front of you and show... represent our student body in a way that's saying we really are craving this need to have that road restructured and show the students and the rest of the city that we're putting their safety first. So thank you for your time. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Anyone else in the chambers this evening that wants to make a comment during public comments? See no one at this time? Okay.
Good evening. Jeff Messer, City Resident. In November, the Commission approved a three-year, $55,800 lease for a public safety substation at 248 North Kalamazoo Mall. That lease was to begin December 1st. It is now January 3rd. That space remains unrenovated and unoccupied, and I'm wondering to know if the Commission or the city has now wasted the first month's rent of $1,550, or if that has been deferred, or what the plans are for that space, when it's going to be renovated, when it's going to be occupied. There's supposed to be social workers there for the people in that area. So during the City Manager's Report on the agenda, would Manager Rissma please update the public on the plans for that space? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chambers who would like to make a comment during public comments?
Hello. My name is Wendy Fields. I'm a citizen of Kalamazoo City, and I'm also the president of the NAACP local branch here. I come before you with even more concerns, more questions, and all of that. I've not yet had the time to take a deep dive into the report regarding the investigation of Chief Coakley, but what I did glean raised concerns and more questions for me around discrimination, fairness, inconsistency in practices. It's almost like reading it and thinking about the robot in, what was it, Lost in Space, where the robot comes out shaking its arms, saying, "Warning, warning, warning." That's what I got when I read the report. Very concerned. Our city manager told us that the report wasn't ready, wasn't ready, wasn't ready. When I read this report, it said that it was turned over to the city November 22nd. Something as simple as we have it but cannot talk about it right now would have been sufficient, but it was denied. And so I beg you, City Manager, to remove the words from your vocabulary, trust, openness, transparency, truth. Don't use those words if you don't need them, and it was apparent to me that you didn't. I can't trust you. There was no reason to lie yet again. Makes no sense to me. And for this board, it's also your job. I don't expect you to micromanage, but there should be a check and balance put in place. This is ridiculous to me, and it's been ongoing. It's going to stop. This is not going to be a good year for you. I promise that. I will continue to look at that 31-page report and make it known in looking at it as to what it should be as we move forward, because we cannot move forward if we continue the lying and the hiding. It ain't going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chambers who'd like to speak this evening? See no one else. Deputy City Manager Chamberlain, has anybody called in?
We'll go ahead and check right now. We do not have any calls.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Next on the agenda are public hearings. I would now like to open a public hearing to receive comments on the fiscal year 2023 proposed budget for the City of Kalamazoo. Manager Rissma.
Thank you, Mayor. We don't have a formal presentation this evening, but we do have staff here to answer any questions. Excuse me. I would like to follow up from our last Commission meeting discussion around early childhood development, and what we've prepared is a plan or proposal that would allocate $125,000 to the planning process to help jumpstart that and to commit those dollars with the city at the table. And for that, we propose taking $60,000 that was actually unallocated from the ARPA funding, overall funding, and then $65,000, the remaining $65,000, from General Fund, and that will get the planning process started. And then, as I've mentioned before, we can always come back once there is a plan and some certainty around dollars needed and amend the budget at that time. So that's one change. And then I believe you all received a communication that follows up on several of the questions that were raised at the last meeting concerning some specific programs. So other than that, we, you know, stand here right now and look forward to input on how we proceed to the finish line.
Thank you, Manager Rissma. So this is obviously our hearing, and this is the... the next step will be at our next meeting, we'll actually be voting on the budget. So we have some... we've had some conversations. I think your response is an attempt to respond to some of those conversations. So at this point, questions from Commission for Manager Rissma's team. Yeah, Commissioner Decker.
Thank you, Mayor. City Manager Rissma, can you just... I know we talked a little bit before. Can... and with all the information and the documentation that the Commission has right now, can you talk about again where you're going to get that $65,000 from? That's not going to come for our youth... from our youth programs, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, General Fund.
General Fund. Just wanted to make sure everybody understood that $65,000 will not be taken away from youth programs, but it'll be taken from the general funds for the budget.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. Other questions, Commissioners? Mr. Pradel?
City Manager Rissma, my question for you is, with the... with it being $125,000 to research early childhood, this is just basically a good-faith commitment that we're going to, you know, remain committed to this, you know, recognizing... I remember when we spoke with Tim Bardock from the Upjohn Institute, he had mentioned that the earliest, even if we were to start implementing things now, would be like fall 2024. So obviously, there's some runway in front of us to do this right, but I just was hoping to kind of just get a commitment from you as the administration, just committing to say, hey, we're committed to, like, sticking to this, making it happen, that sort of thing.
Yeah. Definitely commitment there and working with the Youth Development Subcommittee on that
Other questions from Commission? So just as a reminder for anybody who is here in the audience watching or watching online, there have been multiple meetings about the budget. We've had Committee of the Whole extended work meetings on the budget. We've had other discussions. So the budget that is before us tonight is something that we have gone through, we've talked about a great deal, and of course, recognizing that we often make budget amendments during the year, and perhaps this work will lead to that as we go on during the year here. So now is an opportunity, actually, since we are talking about our budget, to speak on this item. So if there's anyone in the audience who wants to address the City Commission, and if you've done it already, certainly we've heard you, on this topic of our budget, please come to the podium, state your name, and whether you live in the city. I presume, Mike, you are not coming forward to speak, correct? All right. Okay. Thank you. Then at this point, I will close the public hearing. There is no recommended action at this time. Right, City Manager? And would you just then talk a little bit more about our next steps in the process here?
Sure. So with the public hearing being completed, at our next meeting, we'll be bringing resolutions forward for approving the 2023 budget, not only for the city's funds, but also Downtown Development Authority, Brownfield, and some of the other supporting authorities. And so that would be brought forward the next meeting, requesting approval for the budget.
All right. Thank you very much, Manager Rissma. Next is item F2. So I would like to open a public hearing to receive comments on Resolution Number Four for the purpose of approving the... I presume, is that 2023 is what it should be? Kalamazoo Mall Sidewalk Maintenance Agreement? For some reason, it says 21.
No, I think it's correct. It's just the timing of the years related to assessments.
Okay. So it's 2021?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Hmm. All right. So this is for the purpose of approving the 2021 Kalamazoo Mall Sidewalk Maintenance Assessment at a per-front-foot cost of $13.57. Is there a staff presentation on this item?
No, there isn't, but we have staff available for any questions.
I noticed we received a handful of feedback cards from downtown business owners. No questions for staff then? Commissioner Decker, did you have something?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any questions. I did review those. Thank you, Clerk Borland, for sending those out. I just wanted to say that I appreciate all the businesses that did respond and turned those in, and we're talking about the downtown area. And if you have a business, I really encourage you to really send that information back to the city. If you have a business, this is going to be a cost now that's going to be associated to you, and I really feel that you should have a say, and you should definitely respond when we have those things sent out as we, as the Commission, are approving increasing funds, especially when we talk about the Kalamazoo Mall Sidewalk Maintenance and the conversations that Southwest Michigan First has had, and also conversations that particular city commissioners have also had within... with business owners in the downtown area. So again, you know, we talk about the communication, and, you know, we also want some of that communication from you guys, too. So, you know, when you get one of those, please make sure you fill it out and send it in. I personally read those, again, from businesses, owners. So just make sure that you're looking at those and filling those out and sending those back to us, because we do look at those and kind of take that into consideration also. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Decker. So without any more discussion here, now is the opportunity for public comments on this item, and that is the Kalamazoo Mall Sidewalk Maintenance Assessment. If you have any comments, please come forward to the podium, give us your name, whether you live in the city. You'll have three minutes.
Good evening. Jeff Messer, City Resident. Thank you, Mayor Anderson, for mentioning the taxpayer response cards that go out to the property owners as a part of this that happens every year. In the past, those response cards have been included... copies of them have been included in the agenda packet, and I would like someone to explain why those have not been included in the agenda packet as they have in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this particular item? Now I will close the public hearing. The recommended action is a motion to adopt the resolution. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Made by Commissioner Decker, supported by Commissioner Pradel. Any further discussion, Commissioners? Yep, Commissioner Pradel.
I was just going to ask if it'd be possible to include those comments, maybe just in the next Commission packet or something, just so that those are distributed out, or if there's some way they could get posted on the website or something.
Yes. If I'm not incorrect, I know that Clerk Borland sent them to us. I believe they were just four comment cards. So those certainly can be made available. Any more discussion? All right. Clerk Borland, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Juarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cooney.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Decker.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The resolution is adopted. Next is G, our consent agenda. City Manager Rissma.
The following items are presented for approval this evening. First is the approval of a contract extension with Premier Lawn &amp; Snow for the 2023 property maintenance of Riverside and Mountain Home Cemeteries in the amount of $285,890. Next is the approval of a support services agreement with the Central County Transportation Authority for a three-year period beginning 10/1 of 2022 and ending 9/30 of 2025 in the amount of $550,644 for the first year and increasing each subsequent year. Next is the approval of a shared prosperity Kalamazoo High Impact Fund Agreement in the amount of $195,000 for family and employer engagement services from the Southwest Childcare Resources through the Tri-Share Project. Next is the adoption of a resolution recognizing the Kalamazoo County Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Council as a nonprofit organization operating in the community for the purpose of obtaining a charitable gaming license. And finally, approval and acceptance of an easement agreement with Bogan Developments LLC, the owner of 315 East Frank Street, to permit the city to install a public sidewalk along the west side of North Pitcher Street between East Frank and Myrtle Streets.
Thank you, Manager Rissma. Commissioners, the requested action is a motion to approve items 1 and 2 and 4 through 6, and authorize the City Manager to sign all related documents on behalf of the city. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hess. Supported by Commissioner Hoffman. Any... thank you, Commissioners. Clerk Borland, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Juarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes, I'm going to abstain from G6 just because Mr. Bogan, who's the owner of Bogan Developments, is my boss on my Board of Directors.
Vice Mayor Cooney.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Decker.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Items on the consent agenda are approved. Now we're to H, regular agenda. City Manager Rissma.
First is adoption of an ordinance to amend the pension ordinance regarding a deferred retirement option plan.
Thank you, Manager Rissma. Is there staff reporting this item?
Nope, but we have our city attorney available for questions.
Any questions, Commissioners? See none? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this item? Item H1, please come forward, state your name. See no comments. The recommended action is a motion to adopt the ordinance. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Made by Commissioner Hoffman.
Support.
Supported by Vice Mayor Cooney. Any discussion, Commissioners? The recommended... okay, so at this point, then, I guess we're ready to go. Clerk Borland, please call the roll.
Commissioner Juarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cooney.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Decker.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The ordinance is adopted. Next is item H2, City Manager Rissma.
Adoption of an ordinance to amend Article 10 of Chapter 2, Employee Retirement System.
Similar question?
Similar question here?
Yeah.
No report, I assume? No report? I assume it's staff available. All right. Any questions for staff on this item? All right, seen. No, all right, where are we at on this one? Is there any audience, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this item? Seen no one. The recommended action is a motion to adopt the ordinance. Is there a motion? Motion made by Vice Mayor Cooney.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Decker. Any discussion? Seen no one. Clerk Borling, please call a roll.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cooney.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Decker.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Juarez.
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. The ordinance has been adopted. Reports and legislation, Mayor Charisma.
No report, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. So next, we have an item of unfinished business. City Mayor Charisma.
Thank you, Mayor. Last meeting, we discussed having a subcommittee of the commission formed for the purpose of working with the administration on our diversity, equity, inclusion. And so we have this before you this evening as an agenda item, and with the idea that commissioners would be selected and identified, and then we could begin working with that subcommittee and move the work forward.
Thank you, Mayor Charisma. So we had a discussion about this at our last meeting. All of us were not able to be here, so we thought it'd be good to maybe look for volunteers who would like to do this, and that'd be something we could move out of this meeting with. So I know, obviously, Commissioner Decker, you brought up you're interested. Other commissioners? Commissioner Hoffman? Is there a third commissioner?
I believe we had Commissioner Hess had volunteered.
Commissioner Hess, okay. Super. Is that okay with everybody? I don't know if we need to take official action on this. Troy Robinson?
I would move to point those off regarding all the commissioners.
Okay. Well, then I'm gonna look for a motion, then, to appoint Commissioner Pradel, Commissioner Decker, and Commissioner Hoffman to a subcommittee. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Commissioner Hess, Commissioner Decker, and Commissioner Hoffman. All right, my mistake. So I'm looking for that motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Juarez. Support. Supported by Christopher Pradel. All right. Any other discussion, commission? Commissioner Hoffman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna, I wanna thank the city staff for agreeing to do this, because I believe it's so important. Today in Ottawa County, they disbanded their DEI department. So that means now what are they going to really be doing as pertains to diversity, equity, and inclusion within that institution? So us taking this step forward is very important, and I just wanted to say I appreciate you all for listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoffman. All right, no other discussion, then. Clerk Borling, would you please call a roll?
Vice Mayor Cooney.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Decker.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Juarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. The motion passes. I apologize for my, I feel like I'm trying to avoid coughing here every other minute. So we are now down to the portion of our agenda for commissioner comments. Thank you. Rocola. Who would like to start this evening? Commissioner Decker, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna talk about, first of all, the city staff and all the work that they put into the budget that they brought forward. You know, we understand it's a long, trying, detailing items of what you know that us on the dais would like to move forward, and also things that have been put into place by our past cohorts, other commissioners that are no longer here with us on the dais. I just wanna, I appreciate you guys for all of that. I did also want to address what the young lady from WMU said. That is something that we are looking into, especially when it comes to the streets, because when you think about it, the students that come here to our universities and to our college are also part of the community, even though they may not, say, have an address that says Kalamazoo is their home. When they're here for eight months out of the year, we are their home, and we do need to make sure that we make it safe for them also, as they're also walking and riding their bikes and driving within this area. And then that brings me to something to what my daughter said, when we talk about streets, and we talk about the connectivity, and we talk about the bike routes, and we talk about the walking routes. We were in the car the other day, and she was talking about some ice cream that we had at some place that we went to. I really had no idea what she was talking about. So I was like, yeah, you know. She's like, can we go back there, Mom? I was like, sure, we can go back there. So I'm probing, trying to find out exactly which spot she's talking about. And she goes, you know, the place where everybody just walked, where everybody walked around, where people enjoyed being outside, where there were no cars. And she goes, well, there were a few cars, but really, everybody walked everywhere. And that kind of put more into perspective of what I feel that the city of Kalamazoo is trying to do, is I've got a nine-year-old unprompted, unscripted, just saying, I wanna walk. I wanna walk to places. So I commend the city on what they're doing when they talk about the walkability and the connectivity of the streets, and more so of the neighborhoods of what's going on. So I just kind of wanted to bring that to light, and that's coming again from a nine-year-old unprompted. She's just like, I just wanna walk to places. I do also want to make sure that we also give the floor back to City Manager Ritzma, and see if he can talk about, again, some of the, how everything progressed, and maybe why we did not release that report, or whatever that conversation may have been, you know, of why we could not talk about certain things. Because, you know, the community needs to know that. Everything is out there now, and out there, and we feel for everyone involved in this situation. It wasn't an easy decision. I don't believe from former Chief Coakley's position, from the individuals that were affected within this position, within the KDPS department that was affected, within the community that was affected, within the commission that was affected, within city manager that was affected. You know, this was, this is not something that we took lightly. If there could have been a different way, I think that we probably would have gone that way, but it was not. So I just wanna make sure that we give city manager time to address, to address that question that Mr. Field said. I also wanna talk about the inauguration of our governor. I actually had the honor of going able, of being able to go and attend that. And I'm not sure if anyone paid attention, but the insignia that was there for the inauguration of the 2023 was actually created right here in the city of Kalamazoo by Kay Reza. And I think that's something, something great to talk about, because they came to us looking for that on the inauguration on January 1st for our governor. I'm glad to be here. This is a new year, new year, new beginnings, new friendships, new alliances, new moving forward together, new business opportunities, new assisting our community in things. So thank you, guys, for everything you do. I know some of us have some decisions that need to be made. Hopefully, they're good decisions. Just kind of putting that out there, moving forward. But I'm grateful to be up here with you guys. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. Anyone else who wants to speak this evening? Commissioner Pradel?
Thank you, Mayor. So Hannah, who was here from the Western Student Association, I'm an alum of WSA myself from Western. I appreciate you guys coming out. I think seeing the barricade on West Michigan Avenue, the barricade along the center there, when you drive past that, when you walk past that, seeing that, knowing that that is the fruit of the advocacy that the students at Western made. And there's more to come with, like Fraternity Village Drive, and other things that I'm confident would maybe, would not have happened, or would not have happened as quickly, had, you know, students at Western and parents, you know, advocate for those changes. And so, you know, when you see those things, know that they're a testament of that work. And I think recognizing that, you know, some of that work sometimes takes a lot longer than you think, because, you know, you don't just jump and make something happen. You know, there could be serious repercussions by just acting in knee-jerk reaction and putting something out there that could actually make things worse. And so, you know, I really appreciate public services for really taking a deep dive, look at that, taking, you know, that seriously and then acting on it. And you'll see more of that to come as well in the next year. Just wanna make sure, again, to thank city staff, administration for all the work on the budget. This is an ambitious, almost $300 million budget. You know, largely, a lot of that growth is based on, tied to capital investment in this community, water, wastewater, local streets, major streets. I mean, there will hardly be, I mean, if you didn't see enough of it in 2022, there will hardly be an area of this community that you don't notice change or progress in 2023. And we heard in the presentation before the new year, that if you thought 2022 was potent, wait till you see 23. But what I'll say about that is, as you see a lot invested in capital improvements, when we have this ARPA funding, I know, I feel like a broken record here when I say this, that I see the value in that. And, but I also want to not lose sight of the fact that with those, that $38.9 million and any other aspirational funding opportunities that we have, that we not let up on investing in our people, especially when it comes to our youth, especially when it comes to vulnerable individuals in our community to support them. Because, you know, as if people weren't set back before the pandemic, they were set back even further, and those dollars need to be leveraged to propel people forward if that work. I think the other thing that's impressive is how closely tied all that, the progress is being made tied to our Imagine Kalamazoo 2025 Plan, our five priorities that we set out as well. But one of the things that I was gonna also mention is that I hope that the things that we fund, as we think about the things, we also think about things that don't necessarily create a cliff. Because being a nonprofit leader myself, you see a lot of times that there are these funding opportunities where it maybe helps six families, or, you know, is available for a year or two years. And that's wonderful progress for those people who are impacted for that year or two year. But when you create a program, you know, to try to maybe check a box from our strategic plan, or do it because, you know, here's an idea and an opportunity to leverage, and then it just hits a cliff, you know, in a lot of ways, sometimes we're unintended, sometimes there is almost as much harm as good that's created out of that, because, you know, you're priming a pump for something and then just letting it fall. And, you know, if there's really successful programs that we're looking to that are successful, I hope we keep, keep working on those. The other thing, too, is I, you know, we heard feedback from residents as well about this, but also just internally, just viewpoint, is that, you know, we gotta keep our foot on the gas in terms of diversity, equity, inclusion funding, especially anticipating that the subcommittee is going to have some suggestions or recommendations of things that could be impactful. And, you know, I just don't wanna be another community that said that we're gonna do this work and then just kind of hope that people just stop noticing. You know, and I hope we continue to focus on that work and keep doing that. On December 24th, I had to go run an errand to work really quick that I wasn't anticipating I'm making. And so I was out on the really bad roads around 11 o'clock at night, I think it was, on Cork Street, and I saw two or three snowplows pulled off to the side with a city truck, and I was like, yeah, on the chance of kind of freaking these people out, I'm gonna pull over and just thank them for the work they're out doing, because I saw them standing out there. And so I went out there really quick. I didn't wanna take up a lot of their time, but I just wanted to thank them. And come to find out, one of the snowplows was rammed in the back by a car, and there were three or four of our city staff members out there trying to figure, I mean, just MacGyver a solution to get this plow back out on the road, to keep people safe, and doing so on the holiday. And so I really wanna thank those individuals and everybody who worked hard to keep our city safe recently. And then lastly, I was just gonna mention as well, you know, there was another murder in our city on December 30th, an individual 29-years-old stole so much more to life to live. And, you know, I was very pleased to see that we're making progress when it comes to a number of crime metrics in our community, but just remembering each one of those metrics as a human being. And, you know, I would hope that we just don't rest on our laurels as we're starting to see those declines, just because we're seeing declines that we continue to continuously strive for a goal of zero, and make that a priority each year, and especially this year, to continue to aim for zero, recognizing, you know, each individual that lost their life this year due to violence, you know, had people that love them, and so many opportunities in their life that are missed. So I guess that's about it. Wishing everybody a happy new year, and thank you much.
Thank you, Commissioner Pradel. Other comments? Mr. Hess?
Thank you. First of all, I wanna echo Commissioner Pradel's comments with gratitude for our city workers who did keep the streets and sidewalks downtown safe for everybody during the holiday, and took time from your personal families to the community family. Second of all, the Martin Luther King events are coming up in our community. There are several. January 15th, on Sunday, January 15th at 4:00 p.m., Mount Zion is hosting its annual MLK event with the theme "Visualizing and Executing the Dream." Please join everyone in our community for what promises to be a great community event celebrating the life of Dr. King. And then on the 16th, Western is hosting at Burnhead Center from 11:00 to 3:00, an MLK teach-in. Please come in and attend and learn. And then at night, at 6:00 p.m., at Miller, Jamel Hill, there will be a conversation with Jamel Hill at Miller Auditorium. So please look into those, as they are wonderful celebrations of diversity and equity in our city. Lastly, I just wanna say a few things about the situation with Chief and with Department of Public Safety. I have several thoughts, but ultimately, I don't think, there's no win here. You know, when I was coaching, we would say, you either win or you learn. We learned a lot. Jack Urban, I'd like to thank you for your comments, and I share your thoughts about that. And maybe this is a lost opportunity for truth and reconciliation, but I do want us to look as a city into where we might put truth and reconciliation forums into our, into our policies. Here's what I've learned through this process, and it's been difficult for all of us sitting around this dais, and in the city manager's office, and in the Department of Public Safety, Chief Coakley included. We've learned forgiveness. We've learned how to forgive ourselves and forgive others. We've learned grace, to give and receive grace in this time, in this very, very difficult time. Personally, we've learned bravery, bravery from those people who came forward with persistence, with the value of women's voices coming forward, regardless of the circumstances. And having been in the shoes of those women as well, at a different venue, where there were no policies in place, I can tell you how difficult it was, and how hard it was to speak up. I'm just really proud of the women for their voices, and I wanna thank them publicly for that. I applaud you. I know it was not easy. And then gratitude to those who did work on policies and had policies in place in our city Department of Human Resources for everyone, all the employees of the city, so that we could address such issues. And then those who worked to carry them out. I know there were many, and I know that it took a long time, and I myself became impatient as well. Last one, what did I learn? I need to learn to treat my coworkers with kindness and respect. And, you know, as mayors not want to say, that it's necessary to give everyone a little bit of kindness, especially during this new year. And if there's any New Year's resolution made by me, it's to be more kind. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hess. Other comments from commissioners? Commissioner Hoffman?
Thank you so much. I just wanted to lift up a few more celebrations that are gonna be happening. National Day of Racial Healing, that's happening this month. So Monday, January 16th, there will be free racial healing experiences throughout the community, and on Tuesday, January 16th.
And on Tuesday, January 17th, we will have a large celebration at the State Theater. So if you're interested, National Day of Racial Healing is a time for us to come together, and the theme of this year is Radical Healing. So I think that speaks volumes. So I just wanted the community to know that those things are happening, and please join in.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoffman. Vice Mayor Cooney?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, thanks students for coming down. You guys were on vacation and you came down. That's great to do that. I'm glad to see that. And I hope we see more of you. We need closer relationships with students and Western. We both can profit from it, and we both can learn from each other so much. We need you guys. So for me, New Year's is like new beginnings, and whatever happened before, we turn the page. We're starting anew. We got to, I think we have to look at, for me, a vision. What do we want to see happen? What are the opportunities that we have? And I believe that we have the opportunities in this city to make it a national model. I believe that there are people that are hurting in this city, and that's a tragedy with all the resources we have in this city. And I just think, God help us if we don't come together to take advantage of this and make this city what it can be. I think we have to seize the time and really keep that vision before us, that every person in this city deserves the right to the fullness of life. And we have to bend every bit of the gifts that we have to make that happen. So for me, that's my resolution for the beginning of the year, to do everything I can to make this city the model that it can be and to help everyone that I can to this city to the life that they deserve.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cooney. Do you want to try to follow that up? First ones? All right.
I just want to thank the city staff for working really diligently on this budget. You guys are tremendous. I want to thank the new DEI director for embarking on a journey that was set before us and to be courageous and brave in this. You know, because it's a lot of work, right? A lot of the unseen work is, it weighs on people. And we just want to just give you guys a, show you guys appreciation. You know, the Chief Cokely situation is a hard situation, difficult. Wasn't something that just was overlooked, many different angles and perspectives. The reconciliation part, like Jack Urban mentioned, was like on my heart, you know? I mentioned that in some of our meetings. Because reconciliation is super important. It makes people whole, gives them, you know, dignity and restoration. And so 2023 is going to be a challenge. If I'm being realistic, it's going to be a challenge. It's going to be ups and downs, ins and outs. And I'm of the belief that when a challenge is put before us, we could either run from it, sweep it under the carpet, or face it head-on. And I think we've done that in some of, in some aspects in 2022, especially for some of my colleagues. This is our first time, first year. We finished up in November. And now for some of us, we're going to be running again this year in November. But the work is always before us, right? One of the things I really want people to know is to take care of yourselves. Our capacity to do things is extended to us by the grace that God gives us. Our capacity to do things is extended to us by the grace that God gives us. Outside of that, it's hard to maintain and to manage. And taking care of yourself is super important. I've learned that because I'm, for me, I'm a hard worker, you know? I want to change. I want to help and transform and all those things. But if your mental state is not good, it's hard to create transformation. And so for me, this year in 2023, I hope people take, take care of themselves. Not just physically, not just mentally, spiritually, take care of yourself. It's super important to understand that. And I, and I know that, you know, we all have challenges, families coming out of this pandemic. You know, I always joke with Mayor Anderson, I was glad he got the mayor position when I was running, when we were both running for mayor in 2019. And I was like, man, I'm glad you got it because it was a difficult time. It was challenging and trying times. But I'm, I'm, I do truly believe when we are challenged, Kalamazoo is resilient. We've been through a lot of stuff, a lot of crazy things. Good old small Kalamazoo has been through tremendous amounts of things. But we're resilient, and for some reason, we're still in the fight. And I hope, my hope is that we could really, truly work together. Not just say it, not just have it on paper, but really, truly work together. That's what I feel like Kalamazoo is missing, a united effort in all these fronts with homelessness and housing and gun violence and infomortality rate and all these things. If we can get people on the same page, like PJ Fleck, we got to row the boat. We got to be rowing in the same direction. Because if you got the left side rowing one way and the right side rowing one way, we ain't never going to go to our destination. We ain't never going to get to the point where we need to be. And if we're bickering and fighting and having these comments about each other and all this other stuff, we can't row the boat correctly, we're just going to be going in circles. And so I hope in 2023, we, we find a way to row the boat in the same direction to see significant transformation. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Juarez. As I've mentioned before, being the person that speaks last is a bit of a luxury, and I think it also reminds me that how unified the vision is around the city of Kalamazoo by the people that I'm getting the, having the pleasure of being able to serve with here on this city commission, and I appreciate that very much. And really, what has been said incorporates many things I was thinking, so I don't need to repeat that. But there is one, one item that I would just like to affirm again. And we're talking about going forward in 2023. Another thing, of course, we do as humans is we look back and count what happened in the year before and what's going on. And, and here in Kalamazoo, just hours before the year changed, you know, another person lost their life to gun violence. And I want to just make sure that we don't look at it as a number. That was the number as if it's some sterile kind of a thing. And anyone's had a chance to see a recent interview that Chief Boyson had related to this issue when I was being asked by the press about it, and he was expressing a concern that, that younger people are more likely now to be involved than even just a few years ago, that the age is getting younger and younger when people are carrying guns and shooting those guns. And how our approach is going to have to modify to that over what it may have been, you know, even just a few years ago. And that all ties back to this idea of hope and addressing those who are the most vulnerable. And I know that we're committed to that, and I appreciate that. But I also just want to take a solemn moment and say, I know that this is not what we want Kalamazoo to be for people to live here, that there is a significant risk of dying in, in just, you know, in gun violence, particularly over issues that could be resolved in just a myriad of other ways like we've talked about. So just take a moment to remember that, even though the numbers are down. It's, it's something that by working on all kinds of other things, we're going to hope to address as we go forward here in 2023. Appreciate serving with everybody, and we are charged. I love you, Kalamazoo.